Good chance to cheers. Cheers. Wow, seven o'clock. All right, here we go. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everyone. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. First item up is Item 3A, the Police Officer Oath of the Office. Turn it over to Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Exciting night for our police department as we swear on not our newest member, but we changed philosophies over COVID to swear people undo the oath of office once they're past probation. And I'd be remiss if I didn't apologize to him a little bit because we're not completely timely on this, as you'll find out from when he was hired, but we're getting it done nonetheless. And he's earned a lot to talk about here, so we're going to cover some of this for Officer Steve Hoteling. So in October of 2022, the police department was fortunate to hire Officer Steve Hoteling, badge number 3568. Officer Hoteling came to our department as a lateral hire from Elko New Market Police Department, where he served there for three years. While at Elko New Market, Officer Hoteling earned experience as a specialized taser instructor, the Toward Zero Death Coordinator, which is a statewide grant for traffic safety, and a field training officer. Steve was born and raised in St. Paul Park, Minnesota, and he became interested in law enforcement in junior high. He graduated from Park High School in 2001, following high school here into AA in law enforcement from Minneapolis Community College, and then he went to skills training ahead of MTEC. Prior to joining our department, Steve worked a variety of private security jobs and also volunteered as a reserve police officer with the Cottage Grove Police Department for nine years. In 2015, Steve was hired by the Minnesota State Patrol for a non-sworn security position at the state capitol, and he worked there for several years. Currently, at the Rosemount Police Department, Officer Hoteling is serving as a field training officer. He's the liaison for our reserve program, and he's also a member of our recruitment team. Officer Hoteling reports that this department and the city were very welcoming when he started, and he appreciates working for a department that is growing and one that allows him opportunities to train in areas of special interest. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family, going to the cabin, playing fantasy football, and taking vacations on a cruise ship. It should be noted that when Steve applied, he talked about his passion for traffic safety. And he had a, his passion for law enforcement started after he had a friend that was killed by a motorist in junior high. And so that's when he knew that this is something that he wanted to serve in as a profession as he got older. And he put his money where his mouth is. You know, sometimes people say things in interviews, and then they don't actually follow through with them when they get on the job, but he's done that. So to give you an example, I pulled out a couple things that have been written about Steve, and we have a digital employee management system. And I think it's pretty impressive that just after one year on the job in 2023, he received several nominations to be our Officer of the Year. So, and those came in from supervisors that work with him, and I want to read one of them tonight. I'd like to nominate Officer Steve Hoteling for the 2023 Officer of the Year. Since Steve joined, he's always had an extremely positive attitude and is willing to help out. He's been a great example to all officers, and his maturity is appreciated. In 2023, Officer Hoteling stopped at least 538 vehicles and issued approximately 200 citations. In addition, he completed 171 incident reports. This puts Officer Hoteling near the top of the department for both traffic stops and calls for service handled, as well as citations. He's taken on the reserve liaison position in his first year, and he's been very helpful in getting newly hired reserves equipped and ready to be on solo patrol trips. He's also serving as a field training officer, and he can be counted on and reliable in all of his shifts. He frequently works contractual overtime details to make sure his partners who are off don't have to also come in. So I think that's one nomination. The other thing that stood out to me when I was going through Steve's file was the handwritten notes that he's received. So in the age of where everything is digital and emails and texts and stuff like that, having community members that actually take time to write a special note about how engaged with their family, and I want to cover a couple of those here. So one of them, I printed it out, but it was in cursive, and I haven't read cursive for quite a while, so it wasn't very legible. But we were able to interpret it, and this is what involved. Officer Hoteling and Officer Medvig responded to an elderly woman who had passed away in her home. Her sister was remotely viewing the officer's response via live surveillance video and communicated with the officers through the video system. Three months later, we received a thank you card from her expressing her appreciation for the officer's professionalism and compassionate handling of a difficult situation. While these calls can be routine in our line of work, the people who we interact with will never forget the impression that we leave on them. Officers Medvig and Hoteling certainly made a positive and lasting impact on their entire family. So talk about act as if the whole world's watching. You don't always know that you're on live surveillance camera, and I think that speaks for itself. Another one we got here is another handwritten note. This one was not in cursive. Went on to say, "We want to thank the officers who responded to our 911 call on Saturday, November 4th, when Ron fell and fractured his hip. You were so kind, patient, and helpful. We appreciate your help." And Steve was again on that call. There's countless others for taking initiative, handling mental health crisis calls at the high school. The list goes on and on, but I just think that it shows that Steve is an individual that's going to serve the mission of the Rosemount Police Department and one that, why we're so appreciative to have him. So, thank you, Steve. The next thing we're going to do here is we are going to do the oath of office, and I believe our city clerk is going to administer that oath. Before we do that, do you want to come on up, Steve, and introduce who's with you today? Sure. There's a lot of people. It means you're popular.
So it looks like you've got some guys from Elko, John and Josh, where's your hand? We're here. And Bill, where'd you go? Right there from Cottage Grove. He was a, he was a service officer when I was a reserve there. He's now a sergeant with Cottage Grove. Obviously, all my partners in the reserves.
Very good. Who's pinning on your badge tonight?
My daughter, my wife, and me.
Very good. All right.
And my parents are here as well.
We joked with them, one of our officers may have forgot to mention that his wife was at his Officer of the Year ceremony.
And Kevin.
Yes, wouldn't have forgotten about Kevin. So I'm glad you remembered your parents.
Yeah.
So.
Good call.
Your show.
So thank you again. We're going to head over to the Steeple Center for anyone that's invited. We've got refreshments and some cake to celebrate, so we'll get out of here.
Thank you, Chief.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome. I know you've been here forever. All right, with that, as the contingent is leaving the chambers here, that completes 3A. We'll move on to 3B, the Youth Commission Report. Ms. Fosbender.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you this evening, as we have our recent Youth Commission Chairperson, Julia Alex, I'd like to formally state as well, like being new to the Youth Commission this year, hearing her conduct and run a meeting, I am just by far impressed, so I'm very excited to hear what she has to highlight here for you tonight on everything that Youth Commission accomplished in this last year.
Welcome, Julia.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for giving me your time and attention today to allow me to speak to you. My name is Julia Alex, and I'm now the former chairperson of the Rosemount City Youth Commission. I just finished my third term on the commission, but this was my first term as chairperson. My fellow commissioners this year have been Kira Favre as first vice chair, Molly Pittson as the second vice chair, Kirtana Adaguti, Sanjana Adaguti, Nadia Berman, Kira Castle, Noman Hock, Nora Hock, Cindy Harvey, Ethan Johnson, Kylie Knutson, May Laponas, Charlie Lovin, Harper Lovin, Max Raimondo, and Dylan State. Last June, former Chairperson Thatcher Buck presented the Youth Commission Report of the 2022 to 2023, and today I stand here to present the 2023 to 2024 Youth Commission Report. This year, the events the commission was present at was the Splash Pad opening, which is my personal favorite, Leprechaun Days, Night to Unite, the Halloween Haunted Trail, the tree lighting ceremony, and lastly, our legacy tree planting at Winds Park. The commission was also given the new opportunity to be election judges, which many took advantage of. On top of the events that Youth Commission members volunteered at, the commission continued its tradition in touring and meeting with numerous city officials to expand our understanding and learn the roles of different officials and departments in our city and how they impact each individual while also viewing the inner workings of several departments in person. This year, the commission toured Fire Station Number One on Shannon Parkway and the Public Works and Police Campus. Additionally, we met with Parks and Recreation Director Schultz, where Youth Commission members were able to see the in-depth detail and pictures of Rosemount's future projects such as Flint Hills Park, Central Park, Pickle Ball Courts, community parks, and the Rosemount Community Center renovation. Furthermore, commissioners met with Rosemount Police Officer Katie Rusnick to hear about the updates in the police department, and members heard from city administrator Logan Martin about the updates in the Administration Services Department. Lastly, during each meeting, Mayor Waisensel guided us through our monthly leadership lessons while educating us on the important aspects to becoming an excellent leader. And the 2023-2024 Youth Commission goals were to increase the support for youth-related activities, facilities, and amenities, to increase Youth Commission community presence and connecting partners, and lastly, to increase youth events and activities. Under the first goal of increasing youth-related amenities, this year, the council pursued the creation of a mini golf course due to the initial idea and supervision of Kylie Knutson, and she researched and presented the idea to the mayor and Parks and Recreational Director, resulting in the upcoming putting green placed in one of the parks. In regards to the second goal of connecting partners, the Youth Commission helped support and promote the Rosemount Student Council's newly revived Power Tough event, which is a girls' flag football tournament through social media promotion of the event on the city's Instagram page. Finally, the last goal of increasing youth activities, the commission worked on creating new methods of recruitment. This year, the new strategies implemented were by utilizing Irish Update, which is RHS's news broadcast, and through informational sessions at the school and by having tables during lunch with information of the commission. This resulted in 13 new members to the next commission. This concludes the updates of the Rosemount City Youth Commission for the 2023-2024 session, and I want to thank you and City Council for creating this opportunity for the Rosemount youth and for putting in the resources and time for this commission, as it has allowed us to provide input to our city, better our understanding of leadership, and become much more involved with our city and its citizens. Thank you, Mayor, and our former Assistant City Administrator Emmy Foster, former Deputy City Clerk Jesse Pakke, City Clerk Erin Fosbender, and Deputy City Clerk Sarah Ostrowick. I'm sorry if I mispronounced any names. For facilitating each monthly meeting throughout this year's commission. Without each of you, the Youth Commission would not have been where it's at nor would the meetings run so smoothly. Each of you have provided crucial support for the city's youth in allowing us to grow as leaders. I've personally taken away numerous lessons from being a member on the commission, but more importantly, I've become much more involved with the city and its events while creating lasting connections with the citizens of our city, and I got to use a gavel. Thank you again. Thank you again for everything, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Alex? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One question. What's your, what's your planning on doing here this next year?
I'm going to the University of Pennsylvania for my college. I'm going to major in finance and environmental, social, and governance factors of business. Long name, but that's two concentrations.
There you go.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Consider that. Receiving the Youth Commission Report, this is the last activity. Our chair do annually for us, and again, thank you very much. That completes, as we receive the Youth Commission Report, 3B, and we will continue on with response to public comment number four. I understand we do not have anything to present this evening.
Correct.
Public comment number five, anyone wishing to come before council may do so at this time for items not on the agenda. If you do, please state your name and address. Come forward to the podium. Please, anyone wishing to, the floor is open. Going once? Twice, seeing no one moving to the podium, we'll consider public comment closed, and we'll move on to consent agendas. We have items including bill listings, minutes of our May 21st, '24 regular meeting, the Rich Valley East AUAR, the approval agreement and authorization signatures for a harmony development agreement, liquor license renewals for Quick Trip and Top 10, medical leave absence request from the fire department personnel, the PD-PW building distributed antenna system change order currently within budget and its contingency, the Bray Hill subdivision agreement. For those not familiar with it, is the triangle area north of the railroad track, just north of Braystone, fourth edition. Request for a minor amendment to the joint public police department signage. Again, that's for the PD-PW things as well. Anyone wish to pull any item for further consideration?
C, C as well.
All right. We will pull 6C. With that, anyone like to move the consent agenda with item 6C removed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, Tyson and Climpel, to approve items 6A through I with 6C removed. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Waisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
That approves the consent agenda 5-0. Item 6C for further discussion. Hold up. Mr. Keenberger.
Here we go. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll use this opportunity to provide some additional information on the Rich Valley East AUAR adoption and kind of walk through, again, what an AUAR is, what we're talking about here, and also conversely, what we're not talking about as a part of this recommended action this evening. So a little bit of definition, we tend to use a lot of acronyms in government, and any profession has their own kind of vernacular. So an AUAR stands for Alternative Urban Area Wide Review, which is, it's an environmental process, which is a hybrid of the EAW or EIS, and this should all be up on everybody's screens here, but Environmental Assessment Worksheet, as well as the Environmental Impact Statement, often used when you have a large area that is being prepared or potentially being prepared for development. So for example, Prestwick Place. And I'll show on a couple of the slides here where the existing AUARs are located within Rosemount as we are, obviously, a developing community. So once an AUAR process is completed, future projects within this boundary do not require individual EAW or EIS worksheets to be considered, but they're all considered studied as a part of that overall AUAR document. And the other piece to note, and I'll get into the specifics of this one here in a moment, but it does consider, the intent of an AUAR is to consider several development scenarios and then talk about ways to mitigate the impacts of those proposed types of developments at like a maximum build-out scenario. And as required under state statute, they are required to be updated every five years to incorporate any development that has occurred within that timeframe and any changes to state or federal laws. So for those of you who have taken the time to review the entirety of that document in your packet, it is rather lengthy, but you will see a strong focus on environmental impacts, mitigation strategies, and other infrastructure items addressed within there. So again, here's AUARs that are actively approved or to be approved within, in Rosemount. So again, I use as the example Prestwick Place AUAR, which takes up a big chunk of central Rosemount. The Rosemount Industrial AUAR, which is just west of Blaine and north of 42. Rich Valley East AUAR, which is the subject for your consent agenda item this evening. And then Umore Park, that AUAR as well. So the timeline for the Rich Valley East AUAR, it was ordered by the city council resolution on January 2nd of this year, 2024. And two development scenarios were proposed and were reviewed within the scope of the AUAR, one of which would include Project Mercury's proposed development of essentially the entire site for upwards of 2.3 million square feet of data center use. And again, these are hypothetically proposed scenarios that were being requested by the landowner or a prospective landowner to be studied and what the mitigation effects would look like. And the other scenario would follow the city's comprehensive plan for the property. The city's future land use map indicates or identifies roughly one quarter of the site for light industrial, half for business park, and the remainder for community commercial as you move further to the east on the site. And I'll show a map that outlines those two different development scenarios. And so this is a table taken directly out of that AUAR document, and it shows scenario one and scenario two, which were studied in, I think it's like 360-some pages within that document, and what the total project area, as well as the breakdown of those proposed uses could be. So scenario one, again, that's on this table right here, but graphical impact shows a potential for a development of upwards of 2.3 million square feet of data center use. And then a couple other items that are indicated within the legend here regarding scenario one. And scenario two, studied within the AUAR document, shows the breakdown and proposed locations based on our current comprehensive plan of those types of development scenarios that could occur. I'm going to continue to emphasize could, possibly, may, hypothetically. You know, this is a document that's done at the very beginning or even pre-development were to occur, as these can be rather lengthy processes. Developers often undertake these to make sure that when they're ready to move forward on a development or provide an application to the city, that they've done their due diligence, and this type of study is in place so that they can stay on a desired timeline. A little bit on the timeline of this AUAR, it was submitted for the required 30-day comment period on February 6th of this year to the review agencies and made available to the public. Comments were due on March 14th and were received from Dakota County and the MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Responses to the comments were addressed, and the AUAR was then revised based on those comments, and that, again, is a very typical process. So you receive comments from affected and impacted jurisdictions and agencies. So it's kind of the usual suspects and provide commentary. It's make sure you remember this or make sure that you incorporate this as a part of kind of their agency's purview, and then those comments are rolled into or adopted into that AUAR study document. And then the final AUAR was then submitted on May 7th for the required 10-day comment period, and then that is subject to any potential objections from those review agencies. And then the city can move to the final step of adopting the AUAR, and these are steps that are also outlined within Minnesota state statute. And here's kind of the two caveats that I want to make sure as, you know, this is something that we have done quite a bit of within Rosemount, but most people wouldn't, you know, be very in-depth on what this process is. It's a pretty nuanced type of an environmental impact document. And it is important to note that before any construction could occur on the site, proposed developments, just like any other development that occurs within Rosemount, must go through all required approvals, including but not limited to site plan, plaid approval, any other subdivision or zoning requirements that currently exist within city code. This doesn't preempt anybody from our standard process. It's only helping them understand what mitigation factors would need to be considered as a part of a development proposal. And then additionally, if development consistent with scenario one, and again, that was the one that maximized the site for upwards of that 2.3 million square foot data center scenario, an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan must also be approved, and then the learnings from this AUAR would be applied to any future development applications. So a little redundant in there, but I want to make sure to hit home that this is, any proposed development would still be subject to any and all same type of criteria any other developments in our community would be. So summary of the requests before council this evening would be a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Rich Valley East Alternative Urban Area Wide Review Update. I can certainly take any questions from the council.
The floor is open to the council. Any questions for Mr. Keenberger?
Yep. So just a clarification for our residents. I know we all learned a lot about AUARs in the last year. So just because this AUAR is here tonight, we do not have a development proposal ahead of us at this time, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And this is simply a necessary preparation step for scenario figuring out, essentially.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So with that, I'll turn it back to council. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Rich Valley East Alternative Urban Area Wide Review AUAR update.
I'll second.
Motion by Climpel, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Climpel? Aye. Waisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 and completes item 6C and the rest of the consent agenda. We'll move on to item 7, public hearings. First one up here is Rosemount Zoning Code Update. This one's also Mr. Keenberger's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll introduce our, oop. There we go. Fixed it. I'll kick this off here. What's before you this evening is the culmination of nearly two years of work regarding our zoning code. And then I will introduce Beth here from HKGI, who's been our consultant, has part of the consultant team throughout the entire process, that has helped us really take a look at our code to both streamline as well as make it more user-friendly, both for our residents, staff, as well as developers and proposed developers. So I'm going to turn it over to Beth and have a seat, and we'll be available for questions throughout the discussion.
Thank you. Well, hi, council. It's good to see all of you again. It's been a few months, I think. So I'm here tonight to present kind of the final drafts of the zoning and subdivision codes, as well as the zoning map. And so we'll get started here. So I'll give you just kind of a short overview, some of which you've heard before, some of which may be kind of just an update for all of you about where we landed on some of the code amendments and the map amendments. And then we'll go through the public hearing process and any questions or discussion you may have, and then we'll get to adoption at the end. So just as a reminder, kind of when we started this project, these are some of our really big goals that we had for the update. So the first really focuses around user friendliness. How can we reorganize the code, reformat it, simplify it in a way that makes it make sense and makes it usable not only for staff, not only for all of you, but also for members of the public who are using that with various levels of expertise? We also wanted to look at the zoning districts more closely, and that really started to come out of the city's adopted comprehensive plan for 2040. And we need to bring the zoning districts up and into compliance with that comprehensive plan. And so part of that was looking at the mixed-use nodes along Highway 42 and trying to understand, you know, do we create a new district? How do we handle those areas of the city that are guided for mixed use? And so we looked at some of that, and I'll talk a little bit more about kind of where we landed. We also looked at just kind of cleaning up the standards in the code, whether that's the general standards like parking and landscaping to district-specific standards. And a little bit of that was making sure that they reflect market trends. So talking about lot sizes, setbacks, taking what city staff has heard from developers and what they want, and trying to incorporate that as much as is reasonable into the code. And then we also looked at some use-specific standards. And again, trying to incorporate kind of what you've experienced with different applications, what you've maybe had challenges with, and making sure that it's as what you've maybe had challenges with and making sure that it's as simple and clear as possible moving forward for what you want for your city. The other piece was also to update the code to make sure that it's meeting all of the state and federal requirements. Every year, there's a number of new updates. The more years you go in between code updates, the more changes you need when you go through a full process. And so we've, we've looked through that and cleaned it up. There is an updated code structure. So I have the zoning code on the screen there. There were some slight tweaks to the subdivision code as well. But for the zoning code purpose, that's kind of the bulk of where we where we spent our time. That was reduced from thirteen down to ten chapters. And the idea here is that kind of those those introductory chapters are at the beginning. And then you get into the meat of the code, which is really the districts and the uses and and what's going on with those. And then as you get toward the bottom or the end of the code, that comes into kind of more of the technical language about the procedures and the definitions and how things work on that end. So with that, I'm going to dive into some of the zoning district amendments since that was where we spent a lot of our time. So first up is the residential districts. Before our update here, you have seven residential districts. And we ended up proposing to eliminate two of those. So that would be the R L and then the R one A district. And the R one A in particular really just got consolidated with R one. And so there was only one small difference between those two districts as it stood today. And that was some difference in the setbacks for when lots are, lots were platted prior to nineteen seventy-nine. And so kind of what we did to incorporate that, because we didn't want to lose that that difference, it is in a footnote now in the table for the dimensional standards. So we still have that captured, allowing those lots, those those structures on those lots to have those same setbacks that they did today. So it's just, it just looks a little bit different and they're all now in the R one district. Just a reminder, we do not allow two unit dwellings in the R one. So that was something that we discussed and heard the feedback that that was not something that the city wanted to pursue. And so R one is just single unit dwellings. Let's see, some other changes. There were some lot area minimums, particularly for R one and R two, that were decreased. And that was done for two reasons. The first was the density requirements in your comprehensive plan. We try to match up lot area with those density requirements because if you're allowing a density of five units per acre, but you're requiring lot sizes that are larger, that comes into conflict. So we were changing some of that to to reflect what's in your comprehensive plan. We were also changing it again based on those market trends and based on what what the city and what staff has has experienced coming from developers. And the other change you'll see is that in the minimum lot size table and the dimensional tables, those are now listed not only by district, but also by housing type. Because particularly as you get into districts that have different housing types, you need different standards. The same lot size for a townhome and an apartment just doesn't make sense. And so we wanted to capture that difference. For mixed use and commercial districts, currently there are five. We are proposing four. And there, I really want to talk a little bit about the mixed use districts themselves. So the new M X one is your downtown mixed use. That is really your current downtown by another name. There aren't differences to that. It's just trying to keep the the terminology the same and reflect the fact that you already have, you already allow for a mix of uses in that downtown district. The M X two, which is the highway mixed use district, is a new district. And that is that reflection of the fact that there are areas of the city, particularly along Highway forty-two, that are guided for mixed use. And this was the city's response to to that guidance in the comprehensive plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about it as we go on tonight. And then the other two districts are the B one, general business, and B two, employment. And you can kind of see from that chart how they match up with the different districts. So these are the nodes that I'm talking about when I talk about that M X two district or the mixed use for Highway forty-two. You can see that there are, there are a number of different uses that are, that were part of the visioning process or are part of kind of what the city is anticipating for those areas. Some of these nodes are a little bit more residential commercial. Some of them are more commercial industrial. And so writing a district that kind of covers all of that was an interesting challenge for us. But I did want to point out specifically that, you know, in our discussions with all of you and with the planning commission, what we really heard is that just because this is a mixed use area and these nodes are supposed to have a blend of uses, does not mean that there shouldn't be a focus on that commercial aspect. We don't want to lose, lose the commercial part of those nodes just because there may be, you know, more of a desire right now for residential. We want to make sure that that commercial piece is still still there and still strong. And so we wrote a number of different provisions that tried to get at that and emphasize the fact that the city does want those commercial uses in those areas along with, you know, a minor mixing of some other uses. And so the first provision was related to the fact that residential uses are prohibited along street frontages within five hundred feet of the main intersection of each of those nodes. The second was that each development site, or for each development site within that M X two district, there can be no more than twenty-five percent of the net buildable area that's used solely for residential. And those numbers are coming from primarily the visioning document that you all had created. We looked at those kind of what had been laid out and we tried to match up kind of those numbers, those percentages with the visions that that were in there. And so happy to answer questions about this if you if you have others as we as we go. Industrial districts, this, right now, there are five industrial districts. We are proposing to go down to two, just an I one, general, and an I two, heavy industrial. And then the agricultural districts and the public district, those are, those have different acronyms or abbreviations, but they are the same districts that you've had. And let's see, I did want to mention, uses and dimensional standards are now formatted into tables instead of lists of text. Hopefully, that makes it easier for everyone to read and compare across districts and understand kind of the differences between them. You'll note that chapter three is the agricultural and residential chapter. It has all of the information for those districts. Chapter four is the non-residential chapter. And really, that's done because those tables start to get pretty large if you have, you know, thirteen, fourteen districts in a, in a table. And so this is easier for people who are looking for just commercial districts. That's all I want to know about versus all I care about is the residential. So there are two different use tables in each chapter. One is for principal uses and one is for accessory uses. Prior to this, I believe they were a little bit mixed. And so it was hard to understand if something was a principal use or an accessory use. And so we tried to clean that up. And then there are also tables for lot size standards, which are lot area, lot width, and then site and building standards, which are your setbacks, your building height, your impervious surface, things like that. And planned unit developments, we did touch P U Ds just a little bit. So the first change that I wanted to highlight is that the minimum area for a planned unit development was reduced from ten acres down to two. And that's something that we talked with staff about to kind of understand what has the city been seeing, what types of of developments kind of have been coming through, as well as looking at the surrounding and similar communities to understand what they do. And typically, what we see is, is a lower number than ten. And so we landed on two. We also clarified for where you start, when you start with a P U D when someone comes in and requests that, to understand kind of what base district are you, are you looking at to start your understanding of where is the P U D going to vary from the code? Where are your negotiations starting from? And so it's clarified in the text now that the P U D will start from the most closely related base zoning district. And then the other change here is to authorize that staff can require the applicant to hold a public meeting prior to the public hearing. All right, development standards, I just wanted to touch on this a bit. This was not, not the main focus of the update, but we did touch on these a few things. So parking, we looked at creating parking requirements for new uses. Now that we have those use tables, we wanted to make sure that the terminology that was in those tables is reflected in your parking so that you don't have a use that doesn't have a parking standard or an old parking standard that doesn't apply. We also looked at right sizing some of the existing parking requirements that you have, particularly with apartments, with senior housing, and with manufacturing as well. So there were some changes that were made there to bring, bring the code just kind of up to modern standards. For signage, most of the changes there are related to the need to update the code so that it's content neutral. That's again, just the idea that you can't regulate if you have to read the sign. You really can just regulate on, you know, size, height, those types of things that are not based on the content. And then there were some changes made to dynamic display signs too. And I know all of you were part of those discussions, looking at shortening the time between changes and then allowing for additional color in those signs. Landscaping is the last one I wanted to point out here. We did update the minimum planting requirements. The current requirements that you had were kind of a challenge to understand what, what was being asked when those requirements were coming into play. And so we did update those and happy to go into detail if you're interested. And we did add some language in the code to require that any of the landscaping that is required by the code needs to be maintained by the property owners in perpetuity. And so that just gives the city some teeth to be able to enforce those maintenance requirements should they need it down the line in the future. So that is kind of the code update. I've got more about the zoning map, so I think I'll jump into that now. A lot of this is kind of tied into what I was talking about a little bit earlier about how the districts were kind of consolidated or changed a little bit. And so on the zoning map, you'll see that there are districts that have been renamed. And then there are some areas of the city where they are getting or proposed to be fully rezoned, which means again, those districts maybe were consolidated. There were a couple of tweaks to the downtown zoning. But primarily, what we're looking at is making sure that the zoning aligns with your future land use map in your comprehensive plan, aligns with that development vision for Highway forty-two. And so this is your current zoning map. And I'll flip through these and happy to come back. But this is the future land use map. So again, this is not changing. We are updating the zoning map to be reflective of this map. And so this is the proposed zoning map. And there are a couple of areas that I'll highlight here. Let's go with this. So this map shows any of the parcels that are highlighted in any color are proposed to be rezoned. The colors themselves pertain to the current zoning district that they are today. And so you'll see up, up toward the north, we have heavy industrial, the waste management district, and then the flood plain. And then over kind of on the west side, you've got the R one A is that yellow. And then C four is the orange area. And you can see those, those kind of mixed use nodes along forty-two are in various colors, but you see them showing up because those are going to be the new M X two district. This next map, same idea, but shows a little bit different. So again, these are all the same parcels, but this shows the proposed zoning. And so you'll see that the, that heavy industrial waste management district, those are changing to I one and I two. The, the flood plain district up in kind of that northeast corner, that flood plain is now an overlay district. And so we needed to add a base district so that they actually had a zoning. And so they're zoned agricultural. And then you can see that the R one A has changed to R one and those mixed use nodes are now M X two. So I think I've gone through most of this, but if you have any questions specifically about, you know, kind of how any of those districts changed, we're happy to talk through that this evening as well. And I think with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, the floor is open to council. Any questions?
I just want to clarify, in your last section, you talked about these are the new zoning for those highlighted areas. The naming conventions are changing, therefore the zones is changing, but the intent of what can be done on those parcels is not changing.
Primarily, yes. There are a very minimal number of parcels that are changing to reflect the fact that they were guided something else by the comprehensive plan. But primarily, like for example, the R one A, it's, it's changing to R one, but nothing is, nothing is different. Same with those industrial districts. They're still going to be allowed all of those industrial uses. It's just a different name.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Freski, and you know, something that's important to note and that we've included in our messaging throughout this is that this isn't changing the development patterns of the city. And this is also to, to make it into further conformance with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that it's not perceived that when we say we're changing the zoning that we're, we're taking something that was agricultural, not making it residential or vice versa. These are minor changes just to be up to code with our more streamlined approach.
Yeah.
Yes.
That in alignment with twenty forty.
Yeah.
Also member.
And so the only thing I'd add to that is, once again, at the very beginning, you stated this. I think maybe it was Adam that mentioned this, that the intent of this is to clean up our zoning as a, as, as a city, kind of as, as we develop our comprehensive plan and to follow along. But once again, not, not upsetting the apple cart, so to speak, but but more to clean it up. And then also to be more proactive at when we do have development and things we want to do that quote, you know, that correspond with our comprehensive plan, that this allows that to do that.
And I was just in watching planning commission, and I know there were some questions about just being really clear on this particular map. Is there going to be a version of this map that does spell out the definitions in addition to R one, B one? So I don't have to cross-reference a legend every time I look at this map.
Yes. And I believe, I believe we've talked with staff, that staff, we will be working with them to, to get the full title on there.
Okay, and then, I know, Adam, you mentioned the communication and public engagement on this. Just can you give us an overview and for the, for the audience at home, give us an overview of what that entailed and and how many people were engaged throughout the process? I know it's been a long process for us, but someone watching tonight, it might feel new, so.
Definitely, yeah. Thank you, councilmembers. So this is, like I said, this has been nearly a two-year process since we first engaged Beth and Jeff as our consultant team to help assist our, our, our team. And a lot of, I want to make sure also to recognize before I forget to the, the planning and economic development staff on my team that have put a ton of work into this, not to mention the, you know, dozens of hours by our consultant team to dive way deeper than anybody should ever have to dive into somebody's zoning code to make sure that we get this as right as we possibly can. And the other caveat too is that one of the reasons that we're going through this exercise is that the, the pre-existing code had been amended or I kind of, you know, used, it's been duct taped so much over the years that at some point, it's, it's not recognizable to what it started out as. So instead of continuing to, you know, patch that more and more and more, this was that, that fresh look at it to make it meet those goals that we outlined at the beginning of the presentation. So from an engagement and how, you know, public awareness standpoint, you know, some of the, the easy things. So we have a webpage dedicated to this. Multiple public meetings and joint meetings with both city council and our planning commission. This, there was an article that we, we penned and then was, went out in the city newsletter along with additional public hearings. So the public hearing before the city council tonight, we held this public hearing at planning commission previously to meet the, the requirements. So this is in addition to what would be just, we, we had to do that, that piece. And it's certainly important to get that type of an engagement with, with our community. And so we, we want to make sure that it's, it's at least hopefully perceived or recognized that additional steps have been taken to not only publicize it, but to make sure that the public can be as aware of these changes as, as possible.
Thank you.
Yep, I've got a couple. So number one, I think we, 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 in a lot of different ways, we've really summarized. I mean, one of the things I think going into this process was really to develop some consistency with our peers and other communities that are in, 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 in our same position where we're, we, we have a lot of property, we have a lot of, you know, green space or, you know, greenfield space, a lot of opportunities. So really make it easier for developers when they're coming forth to, to just make it easier to know what they're getting into, right? So I think we've, I think we're accomplishing that through this. One of the questions that came out of that, that came up, I guess, today that I hadn't caught earlier is one of the goals was to reduce the number of developments that have to use P U Ds. So I was a little, I guess, I, I missed this along the path, but the fact- but the fact that we moved our, the minimum used to be 10 acres, now it goes down, it can be, a PUD can use, be used down to two acres. And it was, you described it as because we had examples where developers have come to us. What examples do we have where developers have come and want to use, and we would use a PUD on two acres? And what, what kind of projects would that entail? I was a little surprised to hear that.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. Beth, maybe if, if you want to start kind of just elaborate on, on that, that change and what is changing in the code and then I can try to come up with more of a scenario based as to the reason of that.
Yeah.
Sure. And so, so currently, the code says that you need to have at least 10 acres for this to be, for you to be able to do a PUD. And that change, that was reduced down to two acres. Again, that was, that was partially due to looking at the surrounding similar communities and understanding what they do. Typically, what we see is that greenfield developments don't necessarily need that two acres, but looking at anywhere that may be a little bit different geographically, or if you're starting to look at some infill projects or redevelopment projects, that's typically where you want to see a little bit of a smaller lot size in order to kind of be able to capture that type of, of development or that type of project, because often those aren't 10-plus acres.
Yeah, and, and again, if one of the goals going into this was to reduce the number of PUDs by now lowering it down to, and ma- making it available to even a smaller parcel, it feels like we're kind of offsetting the, the, the position we've taken to try to make our zoning to, to, to reduce the number of PUDs. It just feels counterintuitive to, to, to do.
Yep, a valid perspective, and maybe I would look to frame it as it's, it's allowing that flexibility that we tend to see at our Planning Commission and then approved by City Council. So the, the adoption of the standards or the permitted with standards is going to create the environment where we're just not having requests for PUDs, regardless of plot, of size, because those standards are outlined within this revised code that says if you meet these certain standards within that zoning district, you're allowed essentially by right to, to do so. Instead of previously, we would have to go through a PUD process for all of those projects to meet those types of deviations. And so when you decrease it to two acres on here, and I don't want to pretend there's a, a real magic to that number from a 10 acre, but kind of like what Beth said, that is still preserving that flexibility on a number of parcels, but it's also going to reduce the number of applications or requests for PUDs in, in the first place. But we also wanted to make sure that we weren't put into a place where we've just approved all of these new permitted with standards types of allowances within our code. But now we still have what I would say is an oversized requirement for a PUD, and we get a desirable development in, and now we're kind of stuck. Because our, our case to bring a PUD forward would be, well, we just revised all the code and the standards in there, but now we're, you know, it, we wanted to make sure that we could still accomplish the, the goals of the council for those types of developments.
So really, in a roundabout way, it's saying it's providing for more flexibility to do it when, when it makes sense.
That's much more succinct.
Right, okay, all right, that makes sense. And then I'm assuming that this is pretty consistent with some of our, some of the other communities, and that's, that's obviously one, one big driver. Okay, a couple specific ones. On the, on the no residential, one, one of the requirements is there's no residential to be within 500 feet of an arterial, arterial, arterial road in 42. So that's just a little over a block. 500 feet is just a little over a block. Is that, is that, i- i- if we're trying to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, is that enough? Like we're, I mean, because a, a little over block isn't, isn't that far? Have we gone far enough to preserve, to preserve the commercial?
Keeping residential away from commercial zones.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll defer to Beth on the, the initial answer to that, because I know their team did a lot of analysis about how to craft that based on the discussions we've had with Planning Commission and council to preserve these, these mixed use as primarily commercial, but not have to go through a land use amendment to accommodate what I think most people on its face would see as a good mixed-use development on there.
I mean, because one of, one of our big objectives is, and I think we've heard it over the past several months and years, when residential, you know, multifamily, you know, apartments, when they brought, you know, there's some concern by council that, are we giving up some of our good commercial space? So that's why I'm asking the question, is that 500 feet enough in some of these key areas where we might want to consider even going larger?
Yeah, it's a great question. And so I guess I'll start by saying that, again, we came up with those numbers using the visioning document that the city has already created. And so looking at that, the 500 feet did kind of encompass any other areas outside of that. It was showing some residential in some of those areas.
Okay.
When you talk to retail or commercial developers, often they want to be on that node. And as you get further out, and I'm not saying that 500 is your perfect magic number, but as you start to get further out kind of from that, that main node point, the retail areas start to get a little bit less desirable depending on who you talk to. So, so I would say, you know, looking at the way that you've created the vision, the code reflects what the city is saying that it, that it would like as far as making sure that those intersections in particular are not fully or not solely residential.
Yep.
But allowing that to occur, you know, maybe behind that main intersection or to the side.
Can you pull up, oh, this is the one? This is the one I was looking at, actually.
Yeah, happy to.
All right, why don't you pull up?
And if I, if I recall, it was up to 25% residential though, right? Like we still have a percentage tie?
Yep.
In addition to that distance space, right?
There are both, yeah.
So how, how does that math work though? Like what, what, the 25%, what?
So it's, it's 25% of the development site. But there's also a cap, and I will flip back to that language because it's lengthy. So it's that, it's that third bullet. So it's 25% of the development site. But if you are able to work with your neighboring property owners, it's 25% of the contiguous node. So each node is allowed 25% of residential.
So if two parcels are combined for one development, the 25% applies to the combination of those two parcels that were put together?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Then if there's, there's, if there's actually five parcels in that node, if they want to work with those other developers and, you know, those two parcels want to have
Okay.
all of the residential for that area, and they can come to some agreement, that's great.
And again, going back to the picture, the, the vision that we created, you're saying that there's no situation that any of these nodes that we've really kind of preserved for commercial are within the 500 feet, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
What, B1 is business park, B2 is employment. What, what's, what is that? What's, what's employment?
Yes, that's a good question. So Mayor and Council, employment is more, and I actually could pull it up for you, and maybe I'll do that so I'm not getting things incorrect here. So employment is, let me get there. Things like hotel, motel, places of worship, commercial recreation facilities, animal boarding, auto-type uses. So whether that's car wash or fueling stations. Nope, not a fueling station, I'm sorry. Let's see. General repair, off-site service businesses, standalone service businesses. So the idea is that this is a district where people are coming to work. And so it's businesses that are not so much the manufacturing side where they may not have as many employees, but trying to, trying to have those uses be employment-friendly.
And I guess I'm trying to distinguish between B1 and B2, what the real differences are between the two. So is B1 more like a business park? Where it's more like industrial?
B2 is more like business park.
I would say that B2 is more of reflective of what you have as business park today.
Okay.
Whereas B1 is just more of your kind of general catch-all type business, if that makes sense.
Places that you would go for a service and then leave.
Yep.
So can you pull up the map that has like B1 versus B2? Just so I can kind of get a gauge of like where those difference, different areas would be?
Oops, sorry. So B1 is the bright red, B2 is that pinkish fuchsia color.
So the east side of three right there, that's more?
That's our business park.
That's the business park today.
That's the business park. So that is the more employment.
Yep.
Versus B1 would be more?
Commercial retail.
Commercial retail.
Yep.
So like the rental outfit is there?
Okay.
Banks?
Okay.
That one.
Just threw me. I, I, I didn't, I wasn't familiar with that term, employment.
Yeah, it's a, it's a new term and term to.
And then my last question is, you mentioned the landscaping. I don't think that's an area we've covered specifically in our previous conversations. At a high level, what, what generally has changed on the landscaping requirements?
Yeah, yep, and I have that pulled up here too.
And I'm assuming this is business-related?
It is, it does not include the like single-family, two-family. It's multifamily and then businesses. And so that used to be, if I'm going to get this right, I believe it was like eight trees per 3,000 square feet? And now the, the change that has been made is that for multi-unit residential, it's requiring a minimum of one tree per thousand square feet of land area with a certain spacing requirement. And then for mixed-use or non-residential, it's one over-story tree per 3,000 square feet of land area.
So is it requiring more, can't follow the math. So is it requiring more, more, more trees or less trees than what our current zoning is?
It is trying to clarify what is required. So it's not necessarily that we are adding more trees.
But just kind of comparing the math that you just did, which is, which is the greater of the two?
It'll depend on the development proposal too, and kind of that, that density with it as, as well. And like, like Beth's saying, it's more clarifying the expectation of what it is because the way our previous, our current code is written, there's some ambiguity, which we've had to try to work with the developers to interpret. We can certainly pull up and, and if, if it's more productive, can provide an offline deeper dive into it. But the idea is to make it more easier to administer and be clear for when a developer submitting a proposal, what the expectation for those landscaping requirements will be instead of this gray murky language.
And I'm all for that because inevitably, that's always been a conversation with developers is, it, we always, I always feel like we're pushing for more than what the code actually requires, which is understandably would be frustrating for a developer that, well, this is what your code says, and now you're pushing us to get more, more density of, of trees, right? So.
And there were certain scenarios too where we were finding that the landscape requirements just weren't feasible on a certain site as development patterns have changed. And so we were coming across multiple situations within development proposals where they couldn't physically locate the number of trees that were to be required on that piece of property.
Okay.
So this, it, I'm, I'm even going to go back to something else I said earlier. If we're finding that this doesn't work, or if it's, wasn't the correct fix or the right sizing of that, we always have the ability to bring forth to council through a public hearing process to amend the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And, and that's, I think, something I want to, maybe now is a good time to highlight that too. There was, I mean, the entirety of it was analyzed and refreshed to provide what's before you tonight. Is it 100% perfect and accurate? Of course not. I mean, there's, there's things that can and will be tweaked in the future.
Okay.
So if there's, something like that is something that we're finding just isn't working as predicted or as calculated in here, we as a city, of course, have the ability to bring it back and tweak it in future code updates.
But as a staff, you feel like the way we've got it drafted now is more understandable for a developer so they know what they're walking into?
And staff.
Earlier, and, and easier for you guys to read.
Seriously, that, that is a big part of the conversation.
Okay.
Is to have a developer say, here's how I read it, and staff's like, well, here's how we've read it and interpret it.
Yep.
And now why are we fighting about this? Let's, let's, let's clarify what it is so those expectations are aligned on the front end. Instead of it, developers put time, money, and energy into a proposal to have maybe misread or misinterpreted something that was gray on the, in the first place.
And real, the real last, last question on landscaping was, do you feel that where we landed is where we generally are asking developers to get to?
And that's the intent of any of these code updates, but specifically to landscaping, yes. I mean, there isn't any intention within these code amendments to pull way back or to push way forward on anything. It was more that clarification and right sizing, similar to the parking requirements that were analyzed and reviewed as a part of this, this update.
All right, that's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from staff? I'm sorry, from council? Staff? All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to really appreciate the time and effort HKGI's put in, staff, community development, our Planning Commission, a lot of work and effort here to, to make this happen. And like I say, it's been a long journey, two years. But again, it puts us in alignment with 2040. And we're just right around the corner for 2050, so hopefully this will last a little longer. All right, with that, we will then move to a public hearing. So the floor is open to anyone wishing to speak on this matter before council. If you do approach the bench, or approach the podium, please state your name and address and your comments.
The bench. Approach the bench.
Approach the bench, yeah.
Your honor.
Approach the podium. All right, seeing the mad rush that's not coming up here to talk about code, our zoning code. Is there anyone?
I'll move to adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace Title 11 zoning regulations and Title 12 subdivision regulations.
Time out.
Sorry.
First.
I thought you were ready.
I, I am ready.
Okay.
However, I'm going through, is there anyone else wishing to come forward? Is there anyone else? Anyone seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we have a closed public hearing. And now, anyone wish to move the motion? Get to repeat that.
That's okay. I'll move to adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace Title 11 zoning regulations and Title 12 subdivision regulations, including the zoning map. Do you want me to do the other one too?
Is there a second?
A second.
Have them.
Well, there's two motions.
Oh, there's two, we'll do them separate. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Limpel, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Limpel?
Aye.
That completes the first action, and then the second motion. Want somebody down here?
Motion to adopt a resolution approving summary publication of the adopted ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Fresky, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Limpel?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye. That completes both motions, passing 5-0. Completes agenda item 7A. We'll move through eight unfinished business with no unfinished business, nine with no new business. Move to 10 for announcements, city staff updates. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. I don't have a whole lot to report tonight. The only thing that pops out is I was thinking through kind of current events here in town. Looking at our window here at City Hall, the splash pad is open. Summer is here, so residents can be made aware of that. We're excited to see that, that happening. Beyond that, Mayor, I don't have a whole lot to, to report tonight.
All righty, that'll complete 10A. Any announcements or comments from City Council? Then we'll move to 10B, upcoming community calendar. And I wish this was a little bit larger. First item up is the Environmental Sustainability Commission work session for June 11th from 5:30 to 6:00. I'm sorry, I can't see this.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Here at City Hall, then, was there a duplicate?
No, it's just the regular meeting after.
Commission, oh, there's a work session, I'm sorry. And then the general commission meeting after that. The June 18th Port Authority meeting from 6:00 to 7:00, followed by the City Council meeting from 7:00 to 8:00 is the next time that we will meet here at City Hall. And I'm going to go beyond that a little bit just to announce that the City Hall will be closed on 6/19, Juneteenth holiday. And as well, just to put it out there, that the public safety in the park is following on that next night on June 20th. Here, running from, I believe that's 6, is that 5 or 6? 5 to 8 o'clock at Central Park for the public safety. So people, get that on your calendar. And anybody who's wondering why I can't read that, I am going through cataract surgery, and my eyes are a little blurry, so. Please bear with me as I get through this. So people, get that on your calendar. And anybody who's wondering why I can't read that, I am going through cataract surgery, and my eyes are a little blurry, so please bear with me as I get through this over this next month, and I appreciate that. So with that, any other business to come before council? Seeing none, have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.